Thanks for coming. We need to.
Hang on a second. This voice isn't.
Yeah, it's not really.
We're gonna start the meeting now.
Thank you. So with that, we are circulating an attendance sheet, so just sign your name to the sheet so we have you reported as being here. Thank you. And with that, the first floor of business that needs a pleasure to meet is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to talk in minutes from the April 8th meeting. It got circulated with the agenda. Does anybody have any questions, edits?
I mean, you might be accepting and circulating.
A second.
All those in favor? Thank you. And I think with that, the next item on the agenda was to take a look at the project plan timeline. I think Charles, you've worked on that. Charlie, you've worked on that? Have something for us?
Yeah, so made a few edits to this change from phase three was going to be public review, changed that to options, workshopping. So with the communications committee doing such a great job, we just want to make sure that as we get to that session, we make it well known that the public is welcome to come in. Rather than us circulating things and waiting for feedback, we'll just really push to ask for public comment, things like that. So where we are today on April 15th is starting in the second half of our analysis phase. We have two more sessions of subcommittee analytics work, and then we will move into options workshopping from there. The next key milestone is the presentations of the subcommittees on the 22nd, and then presentation of the public survey data on the 29th. Any questions about the timeline, where we're at, or where we're going?
Karen Grant, presentation of subcommittees. Are we all going tonight, or are we having like, I don't know, finance? Enrollment was going tonight.
So I think the next, the next item on the agenda is what those presentations will look like. So I built out a template for everyone to use. The, well, actually, we have three presentations that night because the enrollment data we're going to get tonight, the communications subcommittee really is an ongoing thing. They don't really have a readout, so we'll just have the readouts from the three other subcommittees. Any other questions?
All right, I guess the next item on the agenda is the presentation of the enrollment committee's recommendation and their work.
Sorry.
If you change your order.
Okay, you're right.
You're right. Sorry, I want to continue on your stuff.
I was out of order.
So there is a PowerPoint, and I think is Nick? PowerPoint or the group?
I'm gonna pull it up right now.
I'll just have it. Yeah, you got the new version I just sent you. How long do we have for this? So I can be timing.
It was slated.
Twenty. Where should I go up there?
Sure, wherever you most comfortable.
Give me just one second, Jen, and I'll pull it up.
I'm sorry. And Jen and both tried the email, the agenda and the school website link.
Town website link works.
Town calendar.
They have tried it, and Nick tried it as well.
That's how I got in.
Yeah, I couldn't get the link to work from the agenda, but the one on the school calendar worked. They appear to be the same link, but.
I can text them. Always I'll work on. Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Jen McAfee, and I'm representing the enrollment committee. We can go to the next slide. So quick overview of what I'm going to review in the next few minutes. First, we'll start with a review of the consultant's four models from the 2022-2023 enrollment projection study. Then we'll dive into the three major factors that will affect the school enrollment go forward and where we've actually seen some changes since she did the study last year. So that's going to be your birth rate trends, your migration trends, and your residential growth trends. And then finally, we'll look at our internal subcommittee's updated enrollment projections. I'll just state upfront that really our goal was to take our existing model and plug in the numbers from this year into it. So we weren't trying to, we worked the wheel. We're just taking the birth rates from this past year, the enrollment from this past year, and entering it into her existing model. So that's what you'll see. I am just going to note upfront, if you could wait till the end to have questions, we'll discuss everything at once. All right. All right. So as any of you know, when the consultant completed her enrollment production study this past year, she created four different models. So first was the best fit model, and that is going to be your standard statistical model that projects enrollment based on historical trends. So this is going to be your most likely scenario if the trends follow history. So it's not going to be the best scenario if there's, you know, major residential development, if there's changes in birth trends, if there's some sort of recession. It's just looking at our history. So to that point, when the last projection study was done in 2018, it actually wasn't the best fit model that enrollment was following. It was a higher model. It was the best fit multifamily high. So that's just something to note as we go forward. So next, we have the best fit model plus COVID adjustment. Here, the best fit model was adjusted for the higher birth rate trends that we began to see after 2019. It also accounts for the increased employment trend that we saw during COVID. And here, this is going to come up again, so I want to make a note of this. No adjustments were made on this particular model to factor in the increased housing that was allowed by the GMO at the time. So inherently, this model accounts for 142 housing units, and that was lower than what we had seen in the past several years. So to that point, that's why she created the next two models, the two housing models. So I just want to kind of put a, make a note of that, that the COVID model doesn't necessarily count for the amount of housing that we've been seeing on average the last few years. But then if we look at those two housing models, your housing impact model is based on future development levels of 190 housing units. And that's what, that is consistent with what the town plan are expected for future development at the time of study. Though the GMO has since been adjusted. So she did the site last year, the GMO has been adjusted since, and that's something I'll circle back on. And then your housing impact high model is going to be kind of like your worst case scenario. This was the maximum allowable housing developments. What would enrollment look like if that actually came to fruition? And that was 244 units. And again, this was based on the old version of the GMO. All right, the next slide. All right, so here's a quick visual of those four models. So on the right in the blue, you see the best fit model. That's going to be your most conservative model. The best fit plus COVID is the purple line. That projects enrollment to be about 2.4% higher than best fit. So it's just a little bit of a adjustment up there. Then you have your housing model, which is about 5% higher, and the housing impact high is the red line. And you'll see the highest projection there, and that's about 9% higher than the best fit model. Just to give a little bit of a commentary here, when the consultant did her presentation for the school board back in February 2023, she said at that time that she favored somewhere in between the COVID adjustment and the housing impact models. But she also noted that if births continued to hover around 200, which spoiler alert, they did again this year, that her future projections would be too low. So she did express at that point that if the birth stayed at the current rate, her future projections were going to be too low. Okay, so as I mentioned, there's three major factors that are going to affect our future enrollment projections. And the first of those is the birth rate trends. So since the study was completed last year, the 10, five, and three-year birth rate averages have all increased 3% to 11%. And that's what you can see in the gray box below. There is, if you're looking at the graph, you can see that there was a sharp increase in births after 2019. So in the consultant's best fit model, which is again was her most conservative model, she assumed that resident births would be at the three-year average at the time, so 177 go forward. So every year that we didn't have births yet, she was assuming it's going to be 177, 177, 177. For the best fit COVID model and housing models, she used a three-year rolling average, and that's going to be a little bit more adaptive to the trends. So at that time, that was next year, she was predicting 177 births, then 186, 190, back down to 185. So it's a little bit more adaptive. So for our subcommittee's internal projections, we use the same sort of rolling average method with just adding in the updated births that we had from this past year. So pretty simple there. All right, next slide. All right. So if you, if you looked at the pre-read of this, this wasn't on there, we added this slide based on some questions that had come in that we want to make sure we have clarity on. So there was a question that came in about whether we expect the current increased birth rate trends to continue. So I wanted to address that briefly. Just at a high level, point blank, there isn't a way to predict if the increased births are pandemic related. Do we have some sort of like mini baby boom from the pandemic? Or is that an indication of sustained rise in birth? So is it due to something like the growth that we've seen in our town? Again, there's really no way for us to know this, but I do think it's relevant here to look at the census data. When the consultant did her work last year, the 2020 census data had not been released yet. So this is kind of what she was looking for at the time, but it hadn't been released. So if we look at that, from 2010 to 2020, Scarborough's population increased 17% from about 19,000 to about 22,000. Within this, women of childbearing age, so the consultant looked at this range of 18 to 44 years. If you happen to watch the video that she, where she presented the school board, she called them fertile females, but it's 18 to 24 years. That, that age group for women increased 30% during that timeframe. So I'm speaking very much for myself here. That census data leads me to believe that we may not deviate from the current birth trends just based on the increase we're seeing, the increase even over that of women of childbearing age that we're seeing in our community. So again, there's no answer here. We can't speculate, but I do think that the census data is, you know, at least informative to say. But again, certainly back to our actual enrollment projections, whether we use the consultant's three-year average or three-year rolling average method, those two methods that she had, our future projections will increase because of how high births were again this year. So if you look at that chart below, on, on the left side of both those charts, you see that for this year, we had births of 207 again. Weirdly, we had 207 births two years in a row. But you can see how that's affecting your, your projections go forward. So if you look at a three-year average, for her best fit model, she used 177. Now, if you look at the three-year average, that's 196. So again, our projections going forward are going to increase based on the continued high births that we're seeing. Right, next slide. All right. So the next enrollment factor is migration trends. So that refers to the increases and decreases that you see in enrollment as a single class moves grade to grade. So in the past five years, Scarborough experienced an average in-migration ratio of 1.38. So that means that first grade experienced an average increase of 38% from the number of births, the number of children that were enrolled. So in other words, you had a number that was born in Scarborough. You have people that are moving in and out, and that net increase is 38%. So if you had 100 kids born, 138 are enrolled, that's that 1.38. Beyond that, if you're looking at the grade-to-grade migration, which is what's on the chart here, that's going to fluctuate between 0.98, which you see in seventh to eighth grade, as high as 1.04 versus second grade. So you'll see like, for instance, in ninth grade, there's an outmigration. That kind of makes sense because at that point, you're going to see some kids going to private high school, that sort of thing. So again, because our goal was to keep with the consultant's methodology, we just took these grade-specific migration ratios that you see here, these historical averages, and use them to project out within the actual enrollment from this year. So there were some places where the consultant's projections had been a little bit high, a little bit low. So we wanted to take those and actually see going forward, what are the new projections for those. All right, next slide. All right. And the last enrollment factor that we'll discuss is residential growth in Scarborough. So an average 113 new non-senior housing units have been added annually in Scarborough since 2003. But during the years 2020 to 2022, the average of 158 housing units were added annually, annually, rather, I'm sorry. And this increase in new housing was largely, largely driven by addition of new multifamily projects. So I know the chart's a little bit small, but the blue in there is the multifamily projects that have grown in our town. And then the green is just going to be your, your single-family housing, which has stayed pretty consistent. So the reason that this is really relevant is that the impact of a three-bedroom multifamily unit is the same as a single-family home. So you can see that box in gray, the actual impacts here. So a single-family home has an average of 0.77 students per unit. A three-bedroom multifamily unit is the same, actually a little bit higher at 0.8 students per average unit. And then you can see two-bedroom, you're not going to have that same effect. So I mentioned, to call back to the first slide, I mentioned that the GMO has been adjusted since the study to slow growth by about 11%. For our internal, our internal committee's projections, we did not make any further housing adjustments to the best fit model to address this new GMO. And there's a few reasons for that. First, I want at this moment, there was complexities to the housing, the way that the consultant did the housing aspect of her projections that are kind of above our pay grade. We, there are complexities to that, that we, we wouldn't be able to replicate without making our own internal assumptions. The other reason for that is you'll remember, I mentioned that the best fit plus COVID model didn't factor in to begin with any sort of increased housing development. So that model accounts for 142 housing units, which is lower than what we've seen in the past several years, lower than what the new GMO is expecting. So if anything, by using that model, we're underestimating the housing. So I just want to, you know, note that again, that we're not adjusting the GMO, but the model that was based in our internal projections office was already, you know, very low housing-wise. All right. Okay, so executive summary. So moving on to our subcommittee's actual updated enrollment projections. So just to say it again, really, our goal was to say, if we gave the new birth rates and the new enrollment from this year to the consultant, and she plugged it into our existing model, what would it look like? That was what our goal was, was to use her existing model and just plug in the new information. So to recap, the methodology that we use, with up-to-date birth rates from 2022, 2023, and enrollment rates from 2023, 2024, our subcommittee updated the birth rate projections go forward using her same three-year rolling average method, the same method that she used for the COVID and the housing models. We updated the grade-to-grade projections with the consultant's historical migration ratios. Those, those ratios fluctuate from 0.98 to 1.04. And again, the aspect of the analysis that would require more expertise would be changes to the housing trends for the new GMO. So we didn't adjust those estimates at this time. So obviously, what our discussion as a group is going to be is what model do we want to use go forward? So one option, of course, could be to use the new projections that our internal subcommittee has established with the, with the consultant's model. But if we want to try to exist, stick with one of the existing models, the housing model most adequately aligns with the subcommittee's updated enrollment projections in grades three to five. You'll see that in 2028, 2029 forward, all of the consultants' models are too low in K to two. And I'll remind you, she mentioned that too in her, in her presentation to the school board, that if births remained at 200, which they have, they were going to be too low. So that shouldn't be a surprise to anyone who's, who happened to watch that presentation. So for those years for K to two, the committee should plan for projected peak enrollment of around 850 students. That's going to be in the year 2029, 2030. Okay, so I'm going to summarize this a little bit. This is, this is our subcommittee projections, again, using the same model that the consultant laid forth. So if we look at the greens, so starting on, on the left side, we added the actual birth for this year. So that was 207. So then we were able to project using that three-year rolling average. What will that now be go forward? We also added, you can see in the middle, that, that green line kind of in the middle, we added the current enrollment, the actual enrollment from this year to project that forward. So kindergarten was slightly higher than what the consultant thought it was going to be. One to two was kind of lower. The other grades were pretty close. So we modeled these numbers go forward to make sure that we weren't overstating either. So because grades one and two were a little bit lower than she thought they were going to be, we have to project that forward to make sure we're not overstating these numbers either. So I want to focus your eye, your bet, on the section on the, on the right, the totals. So the max enrollment here is highlighted in yellow. So this is whether, where our max enrollment was, whether it was historic or something we're projecting go forward. So you'll see that in K to two, our historic high enrollment projected is 850 in 2029, 2023, and then in three to five is 926 in 2032 and 33. When we think about middle school and high school, those, the highest we've ever seen there was at the very top back in 2006. So for the moment, that's not a concern. I want to, I want to just talk for a minute about the number above that 850. So the, the year before, we're projecting to be high at 850. You can see that the total projection for K to two is 817. And the reason I want to note this is that this is the projection for actual births. So these births at this point had happened. We've had two years in a row of 207 births. The year before was 174. So these three classes that have already been born, this is their projection. So I just want to raise an alarm here because if, if these migration ratios stay as they have been, stay as an average, we're projecting that those classes that have been born already are going to be 817 versus the max that we see previously is in the 600s. Today, we're seeing enrollment of about 600. So this isn't so much a hypothetical anymore. Yes, it's a hypothetical because these are projections, but this is talking about a year that these kids have already been born. So for me, that raises a little bit of alarm, something we, you know, we can talk about as a group. All right. Last slide before we, we can discuss. So this is just showing how our subcommittee projections are versus the consultant's models. So there's not going to be one that's perfectly fit because, like I said, the births are higher than what she originally thought they were going to be. If we look at enrollment today, it's a little bit lower than she thought it was going to be. So none of these is going to fit perfectly. So like I said before, one option would be to use our subcommittee's projections go forward. They're theoretically matching what the consultant would share if she had just plugged in these new numbers into hers. But you can see here that, as I mentioned before, in 2028, 2029, and 2024, all of the models are too low in K to two. So the first remained around 200, like she said they might. So we need to plan for a projected peak enrollment there around 850 in the year 2029. For grades three to five, if we think about what years would actually be affected by us building, so it's going to be a few years out, obviously, at this point. So we think, I don't know, maybe 2027, 2028. When we get to that year, the housing model most adequately aligns with the updated enrollment projections. So if you look, it's hard to see because I know it's small. If you look, that's going to give you like a little bit of wiggle room with those years. You are like 19 above our projection, 20 above our projection versus one step down from that. The best fit COVID, COVID model is like right at our projection, one below. It's, I, that might get us into like a middle school situation where we built it, and it was too small to begin with. So. So all that to say, none of these projections are going to perfectly fit what our subcommittee has come up with because things have changed in the last year, the birth rates in the actual enrollment. So I guess that's a discussion of, do we want to use our subcommittees? Do we want to try to fit one of these go forward? Do we want to, I know there's been discussion about working with the consultant again. Like I mentioned a few times, I didn't even touch the GMO in any of this, so. That's all I'm going to say. And I guess now I'll discuss. Thank you.
So I guess I opened it up. Does anybody have any questions? Comments?
Am I calling out people?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So relative to the data that you've been collecting and the feel that you have for the numbers that you've identified, you think you, your team will be able to come up with enrollment numbers that you've established based on the data, the research that you've done, a set of numbers that we could use just to project with? Instead of trying to compare the different.
Yeah, I think if we go back one slide from this, this is our committee's projections. So theoretically, this is, if the consultant used her model and just plugged in the data from this past year, this is what the new projection should be. So this should be pretty accurate, to be honest. My whole spiel on that next slide was if we don't feel comfortable using our internal projections, we want to stay with one of the committees or the consultant, rather,'s models. Though, that's kind of where we have to try to fit these numbers in. But if we want to use our subcommittee projections, we feel comfortable with them, then, then this is what they would be.
I have two questions. The first is, it looks like it was flat for the last 10 years till now. A lot of the numbers are like, you know, and, and I, my understanding is that the projections, that was, that was inaccurate, right? Like they thought it would be higher in the 2018 or whenever the last enrollment.
So are you, so 2023, 2024 enrollment, the actuals that we've seen this past year are slightly lower than what the consultant thought they were going to be. And it's just coming from grades one and two. So if we look at those migration ratios, typically you see a ratio of 1.02, 1.04. So we're seeing a little bit of an increase in the number of students from grade to grade. This year, for those two grades, there was actually outmigration. So that ratio was a 0.96. So historically, only once, one other time in the past 10 years, we've seen sort of outmigration into grades one and two. And it happened again this year. So that's why the consultant's projections were a little bit too high this year, those two grades.
Are you talking about the consultant from two years ago?
The one from this past year.
What about the 2018 consultant?
It was the same consultant.
And, and did that, was that, how inaccurate was that enrollment?
So the, in 2018, years ago in 2018, enrollment stayed pretty close to the best fit multifamily high model. So similar to how we had like a best fit COVID housing, et cetera, she had done multiple models at that point. So it was like the third highest model is where enrollment actually came in until COVID, and that obviously messed things up.
And then, so, so there's no, your committee hasn't, I was just wondering if there's been learning or wisdom or you understand the mistakes of the past, if there have been. My understanding was there's, there was pretty inaccurate because it's been flat, but that could be my fault.
The, the hard thing with any sort of projections is that you have to work off of averages. So I just mentioned like those grades one and two. On average, we see a little bit of an in-migration. This year, there was outmigration. There was less kids. So, you know, her projection's going to be wrong. So really, all we're able to work with is these averages, unfortunately. really all we're able to work with is these averages, unfortunately.
So I guess then that ties into my final question, which I think is short is the peak, you know, the eight fifty and the nine twenty-six, what happens after that? I, I mean, is it just staying there? Forever or are, are we continuing to rise? Yeah, but you know what I mean? Like if the burst.
So if we look at the bursts that are leading to those, those years is where you have like around two hundred. Um, so that's kind of like our big question mark and, and kind of why I mentioned that census information. Are we going to stay around two hundred? Our town has grown seventeen percent and those women of childbearing years' numbers were up thirty percent. So for me, that makes me think, maybe like we might stay this high, but that's total speculation on my part. I don't think anyone can say definitively one way or the other.
Which group, I'm assuming that, uh, K will be the greatest fluctuation. Because new children coming in. And then that number could be carried on from state and then they, they come and go in time. But you're using the, the K to project ten years out and another ten. This is because of building the buildings. The rooms are not going to come and go. Once you build the building, they're there. If you run out of space or make it too much.
Yeah. What I'll say about the, um, these migration ratio ratios here is that even though we have a historical migration radius ratio for kindergarten, the consultant, the number that she really focuses on is this first grade number that if you look at between first grade and, and birth, that, that number is actually one point three eight. And the reason that she does that is that kindergarten has a lot more unknowns. You're going to see more kids that are in private kindergarten. It's not going to be really till first grade that you got a good idea in our town, how many kids are in the school system. Um, so that kindergarten number, you're going to see more fluctuation than he would for the remainder of the grade. So, um.
But doesn't that affect, if they, if they're actually going to school, doesn't that affect the size of the, of the, of the place that they're that you have to have for them to go?
Yeah, it, it does. On, on average, that, that birth to kindergarten migration ratio is one point three six. Um, but it's been higher and it's been lower. If we look at the twenty twenty-two to twenty-three school year, that number was really high. It was a one point five. So fifty percent more kids that were, were born in this town enrolled in kindergarten. So you're going to see some highs and you're going to see some lowers. Obviously, with average, it's coming out at one point three six. You're going to see higher, you're going to see lower.
Yeah, I have, uh, two questions. First, uh, did you look to see kind of what are the national trends in the U S? Um, or what are like the experts saying about the, you know, kind of the COVID effect? And, um, what, so what is the consensus of expert?
Yeah. Funny enough, I, I would today was actually reading some articles about like, was this a baby boom? Was it, there's a lot of like, not pop culture, but just like a lot of like Time Magazine, like those kind of articles that, that try to address this. Um, from what I could see, it seems like a lot of communities are already seeing a downtrend, like that was truly like uplift and they're seeing a downtrend. Obviously, that's not the case for us. And that's what I'm saying is, is anecdotal. This is just a few articles I read today. So I, I can't really say nationally.
And then, um, I, I have looked back at how, what has the population actually been um, for kindergarten through two. And in Scarborough, it peaked in two thousand and eight at seven hundred and fifty-three students. And it dropped ten years later to five hundred and sixty-six, two hundred students, almost two hundred students below the peak in two thousand and eight. Yeah. And then it has kind of steadily, slowly climbed up. But it does seem like there's, has been a lot of variation and has anybody thought about life stage? Like I know a new development is built. People move in, young families, they start having kids and, you know, ten years later, their kids are now, you know, in middle school and eventually they move and, and or there's no new kids coming out of there for quite a while. I mean, we have had a lot of growth, but it's, it's, you know, there are cycles. So I know when the school board looked at this back in, say, twenty sixteen, they felt that population trends were really, um, they, they were not certain what it was showing. They felt that they needed to wait that you, you know, to try to build something based on shaky data. It is a gamble. And, um, although we need to do some, we need to do something. It seems like maybe portables are part of a temporary solution. Like, let's say we built a new building and we knew we were going to have this three-year period that we were going to have thirty extra kids that eventually they were going to go away. They were going to work their way through the system that maybe we don't build for the biggest, the largest capacity that we're going to have ever. And we really don't know.
Yeah, I think of course, with any of these birth rates, they're projections, but the reason on this slide that I brought up that year, that twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine as being eight seventeen is because again, that's based on kids that are actually born. Like if, if these migrations ratios stay as they have been, we're going to be up at eight hundred plus versus six hundred right now. Um, to your point, there is a lot of fluctuations. We've seen as, as in K to two as well as five sixty-eight. But what we're projecting right now is we're going to have at least one, two, three. Projected here five could be more years of eight hundred plus students. So I, I guess it's like, how many years are we, how many years are we going to use portable? How many years are we going to say something's temporary to use a portable versus something like a sustained trend? And I don't have the answer to that. I'm just.
No, no, I, I, I agree. I, I guess I'm kind of thinking out loud, but I, I know that as recently as twenty sixteen, Scarborough was actually thinking about closing Pleasant Hill School because they had overcapacity. So, I mean, things change pretty quick and, um, to, you know, we're obviously not in that situation now.
Sue's question has me thinking, um, these numbers, and this might be beyond just the enrollment subcommittee, but these numbers would be helpful for me to see what's the projection for K through two? What's our current building capacity for that age group? Buildings alone, what's the capacity for buildings plus existing portables? Just because I think your work is great with the numbers, but how does that literally fit into the space we have?
Yeah, definitely. For the reason why we didn't include the current, um, the current capacity is that it seems like there's so much in the air with what, up in the air with what the other groups are doing right now of are we counting portables in that capacity? That's a good point that you make. We could do like a, with portable and without portable and kind of compare it that way. Because I think that that's kind of it within our group, a big question of like, are we
If I, if I may, Jen, the, the infrastructure subcommittee has that task to, once we adopt whichever enrollment model we choose to adopt, to look at current capacity against the, the enrollment numbers we, we decide to choose.
I think that would be really helpful to us and to the public because we keep saying it's a capacity issue. And I think a very clear chart of those three categories would, would tell the story. Yeah, thanks.
Add to that, it also, when you compare those, you have to think of how it changes class size. Because if you don't have capacity and you're still trying to fit the same, more kids in a building, class size goes up. And that's something I, we were talking about in our committee. So I did have a question about outmigration. You would said, um, was it grade one, two, recently had an outmigration? Do we have any idea why? Like, is there anything that's, the town knows? Is it homeschooling? Is it because parents now private? They don't like our school. Like, I'm just curious that that grade level left all of a sudden, you know, we went so low.
Right. Curious. The, um, to your point though about homeschooling, that, um, the best fit plus COVID model does factor into it, or she did factor into it, the increased homeschooling that we saw during COVID. So it's, it's probably not that. It's probably not that this year there was a ton of homeschooling. I, I don't, I'm not sure exactly what, would have gone into it, but, um, at least she did, she had accounted homeschooling increases into her COVID model.
I certainly can't account for all of it, but my dentist and a bunch of other people I know have moved and taken their children with them, obviously, even though they wanted to leave behind. But they've moved to other places like Gorm and so on. So that's why they're out of the school system. So I think you've done a wonderful job. And I think it's a crapshoot no matter what because there's so many variables. But I think that that's part of it, that some people have moved out of the town for whatever reason, to get a bigger house or whatever and they couldn't afford it here, they went someplace else.
That's true, but the, with these migration ratios, that's accounting for people moving in and moving out. So for, for most years, the net of people moving in and out, there's a little bit more of an in-migration. Like I said before, in some years, like ninth, kids going to ninth grade, that's where you see more of an outmigration because people tend to go to a private school. That's just going to be a more common age range for that. For other years, we tend to see an in-migration into our schools and this community.
So what was the year of that? The, the outmigration?
Outmigration. So you see that, um, kind of like the seventh, eighth, ninth grades, we see outmigration. No, what year?
But did it occur just a, at one school year or was it, is that a trend across time?
It's not a trend. So why that came up is in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four projections, the actuals, um, first grade and second grade was a little bit lower than what the consultant had projected because we saw an outmigration in those two grades, even though we don't typically see it. There was only one other time in the last ten years where we've seen outmigration.
I just wondered because to, to your point, another thing, when COVID happened and the schools shut down, a lot of families went to private schools for that year and some have probably stayed, stayed.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a way to find out outmigration of pre, like babies? Meaning, I just had a thought of like, everyone came to Maine during COVID, get away from cities, made some love, had some babies. And then when maybe went back to the cities, I'm not saying that that happened. Do you have a way of tracking?
Not, not prior to school. So the first time prior, you have the birth rate trends. And then the next like official number you have is kindergarten enrollment. So there's no numbers that's like a townwide number anywhere in between there.
So we actually don't know how many babies are still here from those two birth years.
Yeah, like the babies that were born last year was two oh seven. Are there still two oh seven in town?
Yeah, I see. Okay, good to know.
Is there also some level of, um, assumption that like a three-bedroom home isn't, you know, a small family of three isn't going to leave to have a family of like one moving into that home? So like, aren't you kind of selling a five, five-bedroom home to a family that's going to fill it with probably children? So some of the out is just getting replaced with new?
Yeah, that's why any of these migration ratios are, are a net. And any point you're going to see moving in, moving out, moving in, is that out? These are just like averages of what we've seen over the last ten years.
So what, what we're trying to do tonight is really try to vector to, do we accept their recommendation? Find out what the recommendation is. Do people need more specific information to be able to make that decision tonight? I think this. No basis to, you know, make. Um, my question is, we were convened to look at the information that was there because to some degree, there was a lot of mistrust about what was done before, or that's one way of looking at it. Are we in a position just to accept a new approach? Would we serve ourselves better by having whatever the recommendation is embedded by the consultant who has a professional credential? And do we have budget to do that in time? That's, I'm not expecting an answer, but I want to pose that. I think.
The actual venue was faced, wasn't that so slated to be? But it's great.
I, I'll, I'll just tell you from a project plan perspective. Unless that we, the consultants on speed dial or retainer, we can get them in to talk to us next week. We really don't have you know, the time. I, I, but I don't know what the relationship is with, with the consultant and the town.
Uh, it's not, it's not a relationship between the consultant and the town as so much as it is between the town, uh, between the school district and the consultant. Um, and she has, like we said, she's done this report twice now. Um, I know it takes her many months to run the level of analysis that she runs each time she does this for us. And it's a contracted service. And so as far as I know right now, there's no additional funds to contract her for additional hours. And my take on phase one is kind of this committee was tasked with taking a look at that report and, you know, uh, confirming the assumptions that Rebecca Wondell had made and then making a recommendation to us which model we should go with.
So to try and smoothen things out a little bit, because it's going to be extremely difficult to come up with a set of numbers that will allow us to go forward with our presentations. The numbers that you have, I'm going to suggest are probably workable for the work we need to do. And I have, my question would be, is migration a factor in those numbers? I mean, is it going to make, is it going to swing in the principal to school side?
But we use the same migration factors that she used, which was, is looking at our ten-year history. What are those migration ratios? And we just updated those go forward with the new birth rates and the new enrollment. So it's kind of like we just plugged these numbers from this past year into her existing model. Where our model wasn't updated was based on the new GMO that, that came out since she did that. So part of the reason we had started with the best COVID model is kind of like our base that we updated these projections based off of was that that was already on the low end for housing. Um, we know that with the new GMO, there was decreases in the, in the housing allowances. This was even lower than that. So we, we weren't really in a risk of overdoing housing by, by starting with the COVID model as our base.
Me, I, I think as this conversation is that one we're trying to get to tonight, which I think is April, as suggested is, do you have, what is your specific recommendation for us to consider? So what we want to do is, do you have enough information, do you feel, to be able to accept their recommendation? That's what we're trying to get to tonight. So I think if you can articulate.
So, um, so looking at the number two and three here, there's, well, there's this and then there's a, a third option. One, we can use our projections that our internal subcommittee created. Again, the, the purpose of that was we're plugging in the new numbers into our model. It should, it should be kind of the most accurate. That's one option. Number two is if we want to try to fit these numbers into one of her existing models, we can say what, what kind of closest is this path this is falling. And that's where you see number two and three here. So if we look at grades three to five, our suggesting, suggestion would be to use the housing model. And if we're looking at, um, K to two, all of these are too low. She, and she even said that was going to happen if the birth remained at two hundred. So there, our suggestion is to plan for um, a max enrollment of eight fifty. Yeah.
So what? I, I just had a quick question on this. The max enrollment's eight fifty, but I, I'm just thinking from just pure building purposes. How much percentage should we think about of sort of additional to that? So if you're thinking it's eight fifty, but should we add another twenty percent to it as a possibility that this thing could be way off? One way or the other? I mean, I'm more looking up than looking down. We made the mistake decades ago in the middle school.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and I don't think we, the town should make that mistake again. So do you have any input on that? Any modeling on?
I don't have any modeling. I, the question that I just heard when you said that is I'm, I'm curious with what was just being built, how much higher than the projected enrollment we built that for? Because that's probably, we're probably going to be planning for a similar. And I don't have the answer to that. I don't know if anyone here does.
So, so in order for, to move this on the discussion on tonight, do you have a clear recommendation? It said there's three options, but is there? This is, this is.
Yeah, I think, I think what we're deciding is, like I said, either we use our committees, Subprojections or those subcommittees' projections we created. Or we're doing number two and three here, we're using housing for three to five, otherwise your your max is eight fifty. Unfortunately, because the changes in the birth trends, the the differences in enrollment this year. There, I can't just say this model's perfect for for going forward, it's, there's not gonna be one, that's that's the point of why we changed the projections. So I, but I know that there's, there is a little bit of hesitation and deviating from using one of her existing models. Just because of the um. Of the we have of using it, is it is this in consultant model? My personal opinion, I'm just speaking for me right now, is to use our sub our subcommittees' projections, because those are gonna be the most accurate with birth rates and and enrollment from this year.
Just to clarify, the subcommittee is the best fit plus COVID is with updated birth, okay?
Yeah, yeah, updated birth and an upgrade, updated enrollment from this year.
Okay, good. I I think it was on an earlier slide, but I I wanna jump around, what what was the max enrollment with that updated model?
The updated model, do you wanna go back to um one slide after this?
This one here?
Yep.
Eight forty K to two.
So K to two is eight fifty, three to five is.
Oh, twenty-six, okay, so I I misunderstood your options previously, so even, so if we went with your suggestion to use the subcommittee's data. Or option three of just accepting, and either way, we're, we need to plan for eight hundred and fifty students?
Yeah, yeah, but.
Okay.
To that point, all of her models are definitely too low in K to two, so. We went above and said, you need to plan for this eight fifty instead, none of her models are gonna be sufficient for those particular grades.
So I think.
Yeah, and not to add one data, because everybody's probably dying in numbers now, but one thing just to guard that migration, in two thousand and eighteen, there were five kids homeschooled. If I jump to twenty-three and twenty-four, there's seventy-six homeschooled. If I look at the numbers, five-year-olds account for seven of that. Seven-year-olds are less three, but it jumps back up again, eight-year-olds. Those are the highest ages of homeschooled children. Parents who've had them home, probably pre-K, kindergarten, and for one reason or another, not letting go, bringing them back in. That's a big jump, five from eighteen to seventy-six currently as of right now. So seventy-six kids are being homeschooled. Now, how do you project how that's gonna change, or the trust, especially the trust in a new building and all that?
So I think where we are is the the recommendation is to, we do have a quorum tonight. Recommendation is to accept the community, the committee's numbers as a basis of our work. And with that, by show of hands, how many are comfortable? Going in that direction tonight? Without counting Julianne County.
I I hope.
That's that, I think that's the majority.
Yeah, that's a.
So, I guess with with that sort of show of hands, a motion to accept the committee's numbers for enrollment for our work going forward at this point.
Eight fifty? Accepting.
The numbers up.
These these over here, which two gets that eight fifty, yes, sir. So that there was a motion to do, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Hey, thank you. Jenna, thanks so much. Nice job. Next, next item of business, Charlie assures the locals that you had started to talk about the school finance. Subcommittee of the rules?
Um, so I dropped these templates in each of your subcommittee folders in the Google Drive, I'll just open one. Quickly, so we can see it, essentially, so that you, we wanted, we we realized we didn't give you guys kind of any direction as to what are you presenting at the end of this? And so I just put together a quick template, um which is very focused on um the tasks, the the tasking that we received at the beginning of the subcommittees. So basically, there's a slide for each question or research topic that was put, that was given to each subcommittee. And so um I think kind of one way to organize as we get to the next two sessions and get ready for those readouts is to start focusing on. Addressing the specific issues within those, work to fill these out and and come up with a presentation, so very simple template. By all means, you know, just as Jenna's group had some charts and graphs and kind of made their own. I just made a a a template slide for each question or task. And use, you know, whatever fits to get your message across as you need, as long as it addresses the questions. Questions, yep, sir.
Yeah, so um so speak on behalf of the finance subcommittee. I have some serious concerns, oh, just I have ours pulled up about kind of what we're tasked with presenting. Um, specifically like overview of assumptions and overview of construction projections, like we're handcuffed by Harriman right now. We submitted all these questions and essentially the response that we just received from Shannon, I think yesterday. Was, yeah, we provided you all the detail and it's like. In my view, we can't real, we don't even know, we can't really provide an overview of assumptions, we we don't even know what the assumptions are, like in the first place. Um, so I just said, I'm just curious what everyone's thoughts are, particularly for like our subcommittee. Trying to, I guess, present on something that we don't really have the information to even bet yet.
So we had the, we had the same request for the same data, I didn't see Shannon's response yet, so I apologize, but. Maybe, maybe we just have a smaller breakout group and work that through, because the the infrastructure committee. Two of ours are also to look at the cost estimates for the renovations we think the buildings need. And so to your point, we really can't do that without understanding the cost basis, so. Can we just do a little breakout session so the other subcommittees can get to work?
Yep.
So I think with that at this point, we'll adjourn to our subcommittees and maybe re-adjourn at seven forty. Short, abbreviated session. That makes sense, and our two minutes finance and.
Yeah, I think I think I. I need a scoreboard, Wes, because I think you guys have a relationship with Harriman, right? Yeah, can you guys just, maybe with us really quick, to kind of talk through what Shannon and. You heard him right, you should go. I told Nick last time, like, oh, like, what if it's, we could just sort of, you know, give sort of to another?
Yes, yes. I saw something on the. Which is maybe say.
Of course, they do all the.
What did you do in four hours?
What I saw, what I.
Further up.
I can't drop my taxes in the drive.
So, for Dave, for us, I think our challenge is, we're supposed to.
Like I read this version, I know it's not Shannon, like she's gonna.
I know, if, yeah.
And then though, is Shannon to understand that, well, it's a, they're into, it's not just.
Also, they have.
All of our.
Yeah, so I think it's nice if you wanna go first. Well, it's still a.
No, no case in the.
Right. We try like one more time with our, this time with like, yes, one more.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe it's.
I think that'll be. I think when we break it down.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So sorry guys. Right. His last name, I would just.
Or like, like in the art fair scenario, you're gonna get. Oh, and that's.
I might have to switch out more timing. It's temporary, it's. And also, I think that there's a lot. Very important that. Even if they. Or they. Yes, that's. And a lot of it's right there, that's why we're. Putting in a training.
So then it's.
Well, and it's.
Oh, yeah.
When it's put together.
I need.
Oh.
That's why it's like, is they smart again, or are they here?
So, do we know if someone um is in a random, you know, randomly selected. But they don't wanna put it in their janitorial or they.
I also wonder.
It's just.
You know, so.
Certainly, are they, um, they're carrying it, and they're in my box, it's like, they're hard to process.
They was the piece with of the surface that the town. You do need to write your address.
And Jim, that was to my point, we, just now, just talking about costs, it'll do, it'll do, it's cost to renovate. You don't know how careful, yeah, how, part of you, one, is that, number one, is just getting the cost to renovate.
Yes.
If they do, it's, they're only being asked, like, who are.
Your projection.
In addition to. Do every single law has.
With your audio. Yeah. I think I want to correct it, and I'll say if I knew.
In the parking. Last thing, it came to the boat by Harrison.
Inspection.
Like, oh, stop, I had a furniture, went to the hotel. So, I, I love the. And it was a fresh. In a hundred and last place.
I made a week's worth of. So. They don't. They never.
That's why I agree with them.
The first. I think. On this one, it's. Just to say like.
Yeah. But. Well. So.
I remember. I remember.
It's. Like. You know. The way that. That.
Right.
And I don't.
I.
I.
Why do you want to.
They were.
I'm.
Um, I always like.
Oh, that.
On the. That.
Oh.
Right.
I'm. He's. He's having a meeting. So. There. They will. They report back to us.
It's. Did you. How the second one comes to. I wish you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's.
Here we go.
No, no. I don't.
Yes. Yeah, but me.
I'm. Good.
It's the. It's the. You know, we record.
That was. That's. Nothing.
And I. That's. That's. You know.
Oh, you. That's. I would.
Right.
Say.
Yes. It.
We're. One. Where we are.
Um.
Or just. Tell. Ready. We don't have to go yet.
Anyone.
Right. Like. I was. And.
Only.
Yeah.
I have a.
Right.
We have to. You know, I did. I did.
Good idea. But it's.
Alright, I. That's. Renovation.
In my.
You know, I have.
If. Wasn't. Gonna. How.
How.
Can you comment on here? It's. It's not. Look at a nice. Like. You. Have a question. What. What is. What is. Gonna have.
Right.
So Jim needs.
Oh, yeah.
Do it.
Hello.
Hi.
Guys are finance, right?
Just. We're. You.
No, no, I I.
Programming and benchmarking.
I I guess I.
We just. I already forgot that. Maybe here's some request. There's some information from us.
Yes. Yeah, so I wanted to.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so. I don't know if you asked. You saw that, but I'm sure you guys all came up with it. So there's a whole lot of questions there about uh. You're saying you're supposed to have an expert over.
Yeah.
And we voted about programming and also.
I.
Other than tonight, what we're doing. So we met.
Just.
Basically. Yeah. They're all this kind of information. What does it mean to say they. So time. We're. Voting on what we're gonna include in that. So if you can just give me some.
Of the the. What. In private, I know.
I get that too, but rather than base it on heroin. We're gonna say what. But basically that this is our presentation next week. And so we'll give you guys that ahead of time.
You.
So. Yes, that was definitely part of it.
Like, what are you.
Well, we didn't. We didn't. We didn't. Right, but we didn't. Tell them. What are you willing to give up? We just had.
You.
Just what do you want?
And what do you.
So. I don't know. So. So and we're. Right now, we're. We just have. We have a little needed. What. It's. Or like. But. Priorities. In.
And we. So. We got.
That's.
Good.
Oh. Uh. Yeah, we didn't. There there was. There wasn't many. Well, there's some of the ones don't have a state requirement. Because the the needs. Tend to be when the states come out. So. But. But I think. They're all just. To give.
Like. First.
Right. And some. Everybody. They just. Oh, yeah. And. Well, and and there's. There's. So that was our numbers. Taxpayers. Well, this would be. And that's the budget element. If. In.
Back and says. He's got. But. Caribou. Or. Yeah. Oh. Which does. And. Again. I. Yeah. The. This labor. They can build. But. They. Build. Like. That's also got to inform. Couple things might get whacked because of. Just. On the side. Right. Roxanne is definitely. Oh, this is. Stupid. It's even. You know, get a. Real. And. So like. Nurse. Oh. Yeah. Yeah.
Right. And we need to need all the separation and all. But. I I think maybe what I'm saying is we're not really. We're not relying on heroin for what we're doing. I mean. It probably could compare to what they said, but. You know, but we're going more by. But uh. Stacked saying. Their deficiencies.
And they're not saying.
A couple of. Yeah. Privacy issues. In.
Uh.
Yeah. Why is it.
How do you. How do we look at that?
I don't know. Like, I mean, I. How do we. And that's just like a. Do you have a.
Yes. Maybe they were.
Yeah. I probably.
Right. Right. We have. Yes. We were kind of.
We're.
Maybe.
I do.
Maybe. We're gonna say what they say. It's. That.
They would tend to state. Or. That. Yes. You know.
Definitely.
I know. So. Some. Yeah.
Yeah.
Some. That. Or. Lives.
Right.
Alright, thanks. So. Weber sent me that. You know. Probably.
Everything. She'll spend her political capital. About eight years of the capital that you.
At your best. Yeah.
Uh, next. I think that. I have. I mean, like. I don't.
I mean, this. This is. Really.
It's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Around there. Yeah. Now.
Yeah.
It's. But. Wait for it. And they're. Yeah. That's it. We're straighters. Pick back up with. The.
It's. So I have. Very.
Inspiration.
I mean, you're doing.
Here.
My. They feel that maybe. It's certain.
They have.
After. That's. It's not that far off. It's. Man.
That's. It's like. The.
And. It's.
I'm. Standing. How we.
They're not. Those also. They're saying. One year.
It's.
First.
I was.
It's.
I'm saying I would. I actually. Like.
Two.
Yeah.
We're. I'm.
I'm. Go back to the.
Women. Who are you. Like.
I'm.
I would. So. They didn't hire.
Like.
All needed. They need a separate.
I think. We. I was. Yeah.
You know, something like.
Sorry. Yeah.
Black.
I would love. It's.
They lost.
I have.
I think.
Such.
Sure.
I.
The proposal was. They. I think we talked about. Entire. Yeah.
Yeah.
Us, like all we're trying to really. Consider it right now. So.
It's.
The information is already.
We said. This. Like.
I mean, if it's not. Or the. We're concerned we have. Or. To. And it's concerning a. That's a counter. It's. The. He is. Much.
Or. We. Are.
Right.
That is.
That's.
Year. And. So. Very. I said. Construct the different. Construct the breakdown. Construction. I didn't get Shannon's email. Then. I. Sent. I.
Yeah.
Um.
Then. We. This interview is coming out. I'm not sure. Should be on. On. More.
He wanted. He wanted to bring down.
I could.
That's. The. Loss. That. Here. And. That's. That. Or. That. Yeah. Well, you just think. They're. They. They. It's. Out. So. They. Yeah. The. So then. Have. That. Or. Captain. Was. Yeah. Yeah. That. The. And then. It was like. They. So. And. What was. The. So. Yes. Alright.
That's pretty. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I just.
Yeah.
I I written it down.
This is. Um. No. I just. Yeah, and then I'll just have the. For. You. Yeah. I need to. Oh. I. It's. Right.
I would give her a copy of this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Send to them and say we are ready to go with this.
Yeah.
We want. Got this yesterday.
We can do. We can do. Some. Practice. It's. And then. The. Whoever. Supposed to. Can. Process.
So what. I think. We're. We're.
Yeah.
In setting something. Strict.
Yeah. So.
It.
It's.
True.
Because. That.
Yeah. It's.
They.
Realize.
Yeah.
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 I think.
It's.
I.
It can. You're.
Why.
And. But. Yeah. Or like.
Everyone. Twice.
Yeah.
I mean. First.
If. Yeah. Yeah. And. Yeah. Oh. From.
Definitely.
Oh, so it's.
It's like. A. It's.
It's. That's.
And. I would.
Oh, my god. It's like. Forty thousand.
Yeah. Like. Like the cost thing is I'd like to.
It's.
So.
Now.
Yeah, no, it.
Now it's somewhere. To.
I swear. Um. The.
This.
I. 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 Important. Yeah. Yeah.
It's. I shouldn't know if he was trying to.
I think.
That's. I'd have needed to give that. I. Different.
I guess we could. Mold.
Oh.
That would be. It would be. But. But.
So. We'll go back to.
Sorry. Did.
Um. So we're not gonna. Okay, let's. Let's talk. So. Website. I. And I. Um. In the. The.
So. So. This is like. What. And. The next.
And. So. Back it up. Just.
So this is like. Something that. It's. The. Right. So this is.
Um. The. Is. So. Just. Find out. Just. Project. Can't. Based. On. This. Not.
So. This. Where. It's.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just like.
Yeah. Um, I need to get.
This is where.
Make sure. Uh.
Because I.
Details on the project history and then.
There's another project. Right.
Eventually. With this.
Because. If we went with that. That. Approach.
Um.
And. That.
Yeah, just enough. To.
I.
Right.
Now. Um.
Has. Then.
Right. It's. No. Yeah, what's. Making up.
There.
Usually. Men.
What's that?
Usually. And.
She.
Is on the website?
I mean. School's website she is. I think.
Alright, so this.
He's.
Estimator.
Yeah, that could vary. He told me that. It depends where you're at design. Right, but they haven't been. It depends where you're at that. So if we're like. Super conceptual.
Yes.
It's only carry like.
Oh, which is why she's in. This month. Sheryl.
I'm talking like you're drawing it out in African. This is what I.
With this redesign. Any.
Well. If. So. Yeah.
This is a super.
We just. Yeah.
Um, so the project was you have a view on. Um. I would. I would. Previously ask questions. And. You'll have some kind of written. Run them by you. I'll try to.
We have answers to.
Some of them. I mean, there's some basic ones like uh. They're right. Like. No.
I thought this um.
So that your phone.
Um, yeah, you can. You can uh. Have a good one here. Just put one out.
So. Gonna say the more ammo we send. Jillian.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's. It's.
Um, well, they've seen that.
Well, yeah, 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 yeah. Unfortunately.
Yeah.
But now they need the confidence.
Now they need the confidence. Put on. That. Yeah. Um. So. So. I uh. If you really ask questions, of course, I just. You know, things like what's. Is the S P A C. So that's. You. To. Survey. Like. Um.
When. We're. So. We're.
Basically. We're gonna be. Basically. Draw. That. Um. Yeah, how is it condition. For. School. Neighboring. So that's probably building infrastructure. Which maybe don't have a. We can, yeah, we can get a. Silent. By. Questions. Um, but there and then there are some things. For. This. Whatever. Way. Your. Right. Right. Um, and then we got some things.
It's. Yeah. No, but I have. Like. Was. Pounds.
They're not. They don't have. No. Yeah. Yeah. Are you. It seems like it was. There. Kind of.
Wow. It's funny how a lot of. We have. Right. Yeah, no. Right. But. I think you can send that to them and say. Go. Yeah. Please.
I.
Right. Yeah. Uh. If. If another poll election. When would that be?
We're.
I don't know. It's. Me.
Yeah.
No, I. I I don't. For.
Oh, that.
Yeah. Like. So. But anyway, so we could probably. Like a.
I think. Yeah.
Questions. I.
Just like.
Yeah.
And then she said you have some ideas.
There's nothing really to.
Yeah, I mean, I. So I'm. I'm sure I I have in my.
Right now.
So like uh. What are we. Next. Then.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It's.
Yes.
I'm.
Yes. So. I can go back. That. I mean, obviously. Very. But. Very. She's stuck. So. It's.
Things are very.
Like it was overwhelming. And then there was a frequently asked questions that was very much related to their um selling. Projects. Then there was very focused. There. But. Um, yeah, there's.
Yeah, obviously. A lot of it's gonna have to get.
Yeah.
I was just. But.
These. These are questions. These are the questions. That. Called off the K website. It's like their website. They're frequently asked questions and they're all kind of.
I think you should go back. And. Look. Interac. All this.
Uh huh.
Zero. That. That. With the question.
More.
Yeah.
Did.
Pass. On.
Provided.
You don't. That would.
Yeah.
But how about um. Why isn't. So.
I mean.
Including. This year's budget. And. They.
That's. Obviously.
Nothing.
All.
And. What do you think? But. That's.
To.
Anything. No, like. Here. So. Last year's budget was. Hundred. Um. More. They. In. When they had to put the budget together. They know that. I'm. But. There's. Supposed to be a five year capital plan.
I would say that there's.
Things like it's got a community center. And. Um, but not. I don't care. I'm sorry. So watch the. The budget. It's. Three minutes. I'm going to town. But. The town and school. As I watch part of the school.
Well, I think there will be. Never out. Twenty. Number. Well, we're so.
I think that nobody. Um.
That it's gonna.
They were afraid to come up.
No one. Didn't. For. Number. But then that. But it's not zero. Yeah.
I know it's not zero. But. No, I couldn't save.
You know. Do you have any.
Some. Some.
We just. Have to put a number on the table. Maybe. Eight. Three. Yeah. Why your. It's. There. Like.
Yeah. Right. Still.
Cause I actually added. Right. I. Don't agree with. Her. He's.
Well, so. My. Favorite. That. Are there. Are there. Is. A. Kind of.
Be.
Yeah. And I think the first one is actually the Saturday. So there. Saturday. I think I saw.
What I need. To be correct. You. I think Jimmy's.
Can I. Can I.
I.
The first one.
I.
They.
So. I.
I mean.
Uh.
My.
Just.
I'm. Like.
I think.
I think. So. There's another one. Three. K classroom. I. I. I don't think we're there. And. I think the first part we guys get down. It. Yeah, answer the questions that are presented. No, I think you've done. That. And I I love the way that you're thinking. I I think. You're similar try outside of.
You still don't know what it is.
We're just. More.
I could be.
We're just trying. Well, that's why they. That's why they consume this.
This.
So that's. I mean. Answer these questions. Part of it. Not what do you need to do to. Okay. I'm.
How's like and they don't have to.
I'm. That's not. And I think we're the challenge. I.
I'm just.
And I'm gonna go to. Ask. One. Is that there's a lot of questions.
You've never been. Or.
How we.
Never. Ben.
That. They go with. There's a lot of financial questions that Herman will even give us answers.
Herman.
Right. But. Right. I think we. So. I guess the questions shouldn't be as. It's. Try. That is. This is. This is what we. Tell. Everything else on here is either we can't answer. Or it really is better to. Face.
Like my. My um. My. Philosophy is always to. And.
No. We don't. We don't land beyond. It.
Yeah.
But I can't see. Any place on this earth that's that.
Yeah.
I think they were.
Cause it's just even if you put it where the Atlantic feels like.
You try to drive through there. Lanes and stuff. It's. Hackable. People coming in and out. You can't have.
We're. Side tracking.
Alright. Yes. Right. Side. Conversations.
Um.
That's one.
Go back. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. Um. You were just going through the list of things that we.
Okay. So. Yeah.
So can we send right now?
So right now. We can send. Yeah, right. Okay. Um. This was all this copy. This is what uh. School Holding Advisory Committee. To Assistive Development. Which we just described.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, through school survey.
Yeah.
Um.
We have that already.
School solution, why now?
Yeah, we have that.
Okay, project time by these people. Um. I think we have just the committee information.
Yeah.
And then um. But yeah, so those three.
Yeah.
We need to get. We got a. Final. Which.
Yeah.
Need to get the contact us. Um.
Actually, yeah. Absolutely. Right now.
And then project history, we can finish up right. And then project history, we can finish up right probably like right now, but then that should go to. But then that, well, that used to go to.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I cut there.
Oh, I don't like Friday.
So I don't know.
Yeah. Or they might wanna just just just.
There's sense in.
We're. Absolutely. There there are certain, yes, there are. After uh.
You got it.
Yeah.
That's the last time.
The last or like alright, yeah.
We in the communications department. By the way.
Yes, but and then they.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
No, I think it makes sense.
I think.
Maybe.
You should let see it, know what's going on.
But I. So just to turn the process real quick, are you thinking of sending like one email to C L T saying like.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's the idea, that's why I wanted rather than cause.
Yeah.
It's just. Yeah, so that was that was the idea. Who 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 are you? Yeah.
I just.
The question is. Well. I view them as also.
Um. But if yeah, I was and I can actually.
Projecting. Yeah, I wish I could.
Well, this is where I I go.
Yeah.
Maybe I ran.
Building.
Well, yeah, I guess.
Just. Right. Questions.
That is. That's.
Like.
It's natural.
I think.
That's.
I mean, we can just say we can just pay some.
You.
Think.
Again, but it's still.
Are you saying. Oh, yeah. Well, I have this. Uh. I mean, it's already already kind of got a banner. There, she probably wouldn't have a banner. I can't like.
Carefully.
So why that?
Is that.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, it's like. Like the logo next to.
Yeah, feel like those like.
Yeah.
Right there, right.
But I would I would have been like. Was. Yeah, it's like when I clicked that and it went.
Yeah, you're.
Project, I was like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I do like that, I have a team with that.
I think.
Sorry.
So.
What the cost is to build a year of building.
Yeah, I.
That's.
I want to. If we can find something. Absolutely.
We're taking.
Um. I think, yeah, so we.
Is.
Cause we can. Give it a turn.
But.
No, I can I can chew on any of the.
Distress.
So that's why I told.
What's my.
Minimalist possible. Like.
Through like.
So like.
You mean she's already.
This is our.
Rethought about like.
Here's something. Yes.
I think uh. And she discussed this with.
Was.
Right, and she said that it's actually it's. Not it's not gonna be that hard. Yeah. Yeah, but stuff, so I. What's you want it then?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The thing is to me do it and then I'll look at it like. It takes four hours and really the headlines. That's.
Yeah.
Great, cheesy files, yeah, so.
Why don't we just take that off.
Yeah, so that's exactly.
Yeah, well, that's what.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, he suggested in the latest email.
I got it. Super. But this is.
So this is the thing I can. I mean, it is, and I think what.
So this is like.
He didn't.
What is the way you were.
Right. Yeah, unless you think I pick up, right, with a bunch of. Because if you look like you're starting calling and asking a bunch of questions, what am I trying to.
I forgot. Any. I don't know if anyone saw.
Yeah.
So.
I know this is.
I have one more question, one more website.
Well, maybe you know this is. Sorry, I deal with survey, but I said I did.
What do you.
But.
Oh. Um they um by the way, there's like. Survey.
Yes, I put it in there. They.
But you guys, especially. Oh, we typed it through the wire. I know. Right out of it. So this can't. This. Okay, for.
I don't know, see if that's kind of.
So we basically.
No.
But. On that. Um. Perfect, perfect. We're trying to get you out of this.
So.
I think so.
So.
The cap of our.
How do.
We're.
But. They're a lot.
Um.
Uh it was. So this is like our gender.
I'm.
I think. Okay, I I really need to.
It can provide as a group of.
Especially though, with what we decided. Because. We um. We're trying. Something together. All the content that we want on the website, we can send over to Shannon. Some of it has to be reviewed by.
I don't know.
So we'll send that.
Yeah.
For a review.
That works well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The form. The form need to be reviewed by. Uh uh could any question. Could we just request that that's on uh website under contact us.
Well, you know, insights.
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay, great, okay, done.
Okay. So you can have that your immediate email.
Awesome, yeah.
Okay.
The.
I hope it's. Thank you. So we're gonna actually break it.
Okay.
I think that would just be um.
Awesome.
You're right, given that.
Yes, yes.
Say we actually have like a detailed understanding of what they. They. Then me, that's us putting those. People. Visual, it's like a visual. Yeah, that's what I think um. And again, like that's something we would do that, we have.
Would say please.
Project conditions case, but.
Correct.
I don't know.
Yes. Restart. Cause.
So so you sure you would have.
I.
We need.
As.
Yes.
Yes.
How way is our.
Yeah.
You have. Fair.
I know.
I think you can start together.
I am considering.
I.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, so they.
Okay. Looking for that, but I. I I gave it a conversation. What. Will you build. I still get some from my. So, I mean. We can try to do that.
Oh, it was.
Social media, we have um so Lindsay has put together, yeah, we have the Q R code. Oh, yeah, can you add. Would you mind adding somewhere like survey.
Just taking the gross square footage of the building.
Yes, okay, so a useful survey, which you got like a week. Survey over here or just a week in a school survey.
Whatever, it's easiest to.
Right.
Link somewhere.
But yes, so there's, yeah.
That's. This doesn't. But he said that.
You could do the both, if you you want like the renovation.
Yeah, yeah.
But that they.
As long as as long as they provided that gross per footage.
Right.
But. But.
Where.
Cause so.
Yeah.
I think my email was like.
Did anybody else want.
I have to go back and look at what.
But it'll make it so much easier for.
Well, it was.
Yeah. It because he. Oh, no, I can't do that.
Oh, just so just product cost. By.
You know.
I'm sorry. Rose, where you guys.
Um, yes, so so who is leading the survey and I figure right there. Yeah. Cause you.
That was like the, I mean, so.
So that's. Um.
Yeah, so we were just talking about.
I think we should be. Mine should be.
So they're just talking about. Guess. We are.
Nothing else.
I think was.
Yeah, like whether it's uh. Someone like, you know, like a like survey, you know, whatever survey. So we need somebody to help with.
I mean, it's just.
Right, yeah, so maybe, yeah, so maybe. No, I think you have. But. Well.
Just.
I I don't either, this is.
I think it, I think it just make.
My baby.
Literally more appealing. See a page of text in there, just like.
Oh, yeah, right, so like uh let's let's go back to the cable, let's. Yeah. The.
Yeah.
I think it's really was like.
Social media, you see.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it. Yes. I think we can.
I mean, especially. So. I suppose you're not rich.
And then. We. Talk to. The issues.
Yeah, just taking.
I mean, literally, I think it would be.
But.
Yeah. Interrupt and do everything. Take.
I mean, wanna be like.
Right.
Wow, yeah.
Kids. Kids are drunk.
Yeah.
Be as. They used to be.
Yeah. Either.
I think that I was. I personally. It's like really great.
That's. Yeah.
That's what it sounds like, you know, and there is the same though.
That's that's not the problem.
Uh. I think like. That's right.
I think it's. It's. Sorry.
And. Just realize. Yeah. I mean, Jay didn't ask for. First. I'm actually. Giving the copy.
So I don't want. What.
Yeah.
We don't.
I know, I don't wanna make it complicated. I'm sorry, maybe we have.
Same too.
Just say, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna.
Or.
We turn up. The social media. If you. I. Um.
This is. Um, yeah. So like. It sounds like.
Like I don't disagree with.
Yes, so yes. Yeah.
Like several months.
Yeah, they just got. You have some.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that's. Yeah. This almost like.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, pretty much, like.
Does he not have.
No, no, I try to look in. Just.
So maybe this is again, some.
Um the town.
There's thought, there's logic.
Well, when the committee started, it was really just, you know, a few people.
Yeah.
Um. It's. And then. It's. Got a lot more stuff. Yeah. Alright, guys. That's it.
That's a tough.
What.
I'm worried about where to go.
Okay.
While.
I'm. Don't.
I. They enter, they enter. When I just got no. I can buy.
What were you. I'm. Yes, I. It's gonna have.
She was gonna get.
But you got. We'll try to show.
Yeah, I yeah, that was.
That's.
And I know. Yeah.
They're all great, yeah.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Pull back and then we also were talking about.
Which is.
The refrigerator. The oil, it's in the tank now. So that we put a generator in.
Yeah.
No, I'm thinking, why don't. Why don't we try to.
We're. Both for the bottom left, all those in favor.
Yes, I'm.
I'm in favor of.
One one. Okay.
Because today's.
There is.
Uh I've. Johnny down notes. Yeah.
Thanks.
Um.
Yeah.
I feel like. Maybe.
What's the gentleman, what's doing all the.
One of them.
I mean, where's. Where's.
Then.
I don't know.
Do you know.
What?
This is my. We've been.
We would see.
We don't have the time.
Yes, it's to me, I was, that's why.
I'm not.
But. Maybe I. Right.
How many days? In at least two weeks or three.
Uh we have nothing.
And I think we have.
I mean, I can grow a slide together and just take. You know, what was in the. Three. We're getting.
So. I. I got.
Um so.
No, that kind of. Um, well, but.
I think honestly, like. Come on. That's the same.
And that's. Wow. They are. Looking at. We're just. You know, we just. Name. Social. Yeah, just transfer over. What is. That like.
What. All of.
You might actually might be the best one, right?
It is. There's a couple of things that you. But. Our. Yes. We don't talk about our. People like. I know, so I. Yeah, yeah, so I. They have a. I don't. Yeah, it's. So it'll. Well, that's.
That's. Yeah.
Yeah. Think what I.
Your.
Want.
Red.
And I'll put it also in.
Cost. They. I know, I think we just.
No, and then my just. But the. The. Monument. The. Out of other things.
No, it's. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and like. The only thing I remember is that.
We'll have a button on the website, we'll get contact us, we'll have the the button, we'll have the link on social media. And it all flow into.
Two minutes. So.
It doesn't really say.
Right, yeah, we post again, okay, you have this question. It's. If you're. Now we have can. Yeah. Or or yeah, are reading this. Yes. Yeah, that's. Got a question about. Even if we don't. Say the committee's still working through this, when it's available. We're just. Yeah. We're actually in B I.
Yeah, I think.
But like, yeah. I wanna put the. Website. The link is. Also, probably. I just would have. I think. No. So I.
Yeah. I mean, I think you ought to be in the. Right.
Yeah. Yeah. I should.
Like.
But like. Shouldn't. Pro. The.
Yeah, hey, I actually. They. I.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah. So. Plus my mind is. Hard to put. So.
I need.
Yeah, come on, I had you.
Yeah, I think it was just like. I would say.
He was. I.
That's a.
I would think of the. There.
Get all that.
Okay, here, right here, I did. Like.
I can edit.
Make.
That's.
And it just makes you.
Yeah, I saw this slide.
I think.
Yeah.
I think.
There.
If you.
If you.
One.
I think.
I think.
From your.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
And it does.
We're.
Well, they can. See. If. They.
Yeah. So I, I'll share my.
Yeah, right.
Everybody ready to come back together? Alright, let's rock it up. Everybody ready?
Yeah. Want me to do it?
Go ahead.
Alright, we're ready to come together, please.
Beautiful.
Yeah, you did, there you go. Alright, you can stay in your groups you want, all, all we're gonna do is read for it out, sort of each group, and I'll start here, you guys will just do a. Work required.
Perfect.
You're the only one with your.
No.
Do you want?
Uh.
Do you want me to do it?
Yeah, okay.
Um, I can.
Alright, so we're benchmarking and programming, we're a little disorganized at the moment, but we had a great discussion tonight, so we kind of found our like most top. Priorities as we're moving through, um, those being safety. We've kind of come to the conclusion that for programming, we really do need to find a way to separate gym and cafeteria. Uh, for multiple reasons I won't get into right now, uh, priority is focusing on less space so that it can grow with our schools and our programming, more so than focusing on what each room will physically do. First, having spaces, uh, of different sizes and, um. Let the school, the school and the programming grow with them. Um, and then increasing storage. Um, the need to separate nurse, um, have like private nurse clinics that respect dignity and privacy of the children. I miss it.
Less space.
Less, yeah.
Yes. That is.
That's.
Alright. Infrastructure.
Yeah.
I'm happy to win.
Okay.
Um, so we, we, um, admittedly spent a lot of time kind of going around and around, um, because now that the time is coming that we're feeling the pressure to start putting a presentation together. Um, we've come to the conclusion that I think, um, the folks in the finance committee are coming to where we, we actually just can't possibly put. I think truthful numbers to the questions that we have here, so we've spent a lot of our time thinking about how we possibly do that. If you look at our questions, our questions are almost entirely about what are the costs to solve the problems. Um, and our charge is not to actually produce the solution to the problem. So, um, we've, um, begun talking about, uh, what our presentation is going to begin to look like, and how we, um, put that together, uh, that about draft. Uh, for Monday's meeting, next Monday's meeting. Pretty vague, but that's.
Thank you. Communications.
Uh, hi everyone, I'm Lisa Perdell, uh, co-chair of communications, so we are still working hard on content to put on our website, uh, BCLT, stay tuned for. A few documents coming your way for approval, we really want to get updated information, books to see about project timeline, um, or the history, project timeline, frequently asked questions, we really wanna get that going. So that as people kind of get more, um, visibility and see what we're doing, they, they can kind of, uh, get updated there. Uh, we're also creating content for social media, we still need, we're figuring out how to get access to the pages on Facebook, Instagram, uh, but we've got content lined up so that people can, uh. Again, see what we're up to, fill out the survey, uh, tune into our meetings, uh, and start kind of understanding what, what assumptions and decisions we're, we're making as a group. Um, and then the last thing we talked about, so website, social media, we've got interviews to be scheduled, stay tuned for that. Um. And, uh, we've got updated flyers with the QR code to take the survey online, people should have received the mail survey in their mailbox, that's that random sample of addresses. But it's, it's, it's also open for everyone who wants to take, so we're really encouraging more input here. Um, so if you want an updated flyer with the QR code, website, uh, come up here. And, uh, the last thing we talked about, kind of outside of our group, but we're just wondering, uh, why the, um. Uh, it, it sounds like as the town is having its, its budget conversations, we're, we're curious why there isn't a line item anywhere for, for, uh. This capital project, even though there was one last year, just, we're curious about that.
We could pass that to finance.
And, yeah.
I, I can answer that, uh, in real time, as it came up at our, um, joint budget workshop last Wednesday. Um, so the school department did not put a capital line item in with a set number for a school project, because the school project to them is undefined right now. There is five hundred thousand dollars in the budget for planning purposes, um, so phase two of whatever comes out of our work will have some funding. Um, to be able to hire consultants or engineers or whatever it is that they may need. Um, and then there is also an additional eighty thousand dollar line item that's related to. Getting updated studies or something like that, but in terms of having the school building project in their five-year capital plan. It has not gone unnoticed by the council that they do not have a number in there, and so there was some brainstorming about how to add an asterisk and, and make sure that it gets represented in there before we approve it at second meeting.
And just one thing to add on to that too is basically, we've got all this information ready to go, we've got a great deal of work that's been done, we've got these links and everything, we just really, really, really need access. To get that stuff on the Facebook page and get it on the school's website, because we're trying to communicate and we can't communicate without those social media rapid avenues, it's just, we need it.
So Shannon's on it, but, uh, she's probably on a lot of other.
Any other voices on town council would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah. Yeah.
And in the back of the room, finance.
Hi, I'm Kelly. Um, so I guess we're kind of going around and around to, uh, like the building and infrastructure. Um, we did look at some information that they provided to us, which I think is really helpful for the permanent module idea for the three schools. But numbers and, uh, the cost per, I guess, square foot. Um, we looked at that versus Harriman and it's such a favorable number, it seems like the Harriman numbers. Are so questionable, we're just having a lot of questions on trying to follow that report. And if, uh, looking at, say, a permanent module, say, for instance, looking at a permanent module number. Versus what Harriman is saying, say, plus for square foot on, uh, what renovations or. Or anything like that, their numbers are double. So it's really hard to go with the Harriman word. Um, and of course, you know, we wanna scale down cost because. We all know why, so, uh, so that's a, that's a good observation that we made, um. And it's really, it's just hard to come together on. Um, how we're gonna really get the information and get formatted out on our presentation, so we're working on maybe get together again later this week or something. So, that's where we're at.
Alright, thank you, any other comments this evening?
There's been a number of comments on, uh, online, um, concerning the surveys.
Yep.
And I've tried to try and explain statistically why it's one vote for household, but a lot of people are concerned, my wife and I don't always agree. I filled out the one and mailed it in, she filled out one.
Online.
Online. If she don't count. But, you know, that seems to be one of the issues that a number of people are starting to talk about, and we've gotta give them a better reason than I've been giving them. Uh, because otherwise we're gonna have that distrust again, why is it only one vote for household when there's two voters or more than two?
Great question, I, I know. Jillian, any, any thoughts on sort of the architecture of that? Why it's one per household, and then I think you can do it online, and there's some question, you can put your address in, so it will, it will count in the results, I believe, is that, is that right, Jillian?
Yeah, I think Charlie had some.
So I, I'm, I'm gonna take a stab at it and keep me honest, but, but I've had a few conversations about this, so I'll just share what I've learned on it. So, the, the consultant that put the survey together took, cause your family, your household represents the demographic that needs to create the statistically relevant sample. So one per household, doesn't mean that you and your wife, or, or you and your husband can't both submit surveys, and when, and after the statistically relevant sample. Is, is then, right, just like the rest of the community who's doing them will all get tacked on, so I, I filled it out for, for our household, my wife filled one out. Mine went first, so that'll be the one that gets counted in for this, this is the relevant sample, and then hers will get looked at, and we don't agree either, so that's okay, right? Um, but we're both also independent voters, right, so, so it will get looked at, did I get it right, am I screwing it up?
I think that, that's, that's my understanding.
Yeah, so, so I think, I.
That's what I've been saying.
Yeah, so I don't know how to communicate that, and I think that's what you, I, I, I think that's what you've been saying online as well, right, so.
Don't you think the other question is because your address is on the anonymity?
Nobody sees the address, the address, only the statistician sees the address.
And I've seen that explained, but some people are not, so I don't know how you fix that, but that's been another one I've seen.
You can choose to trust or choose to not trust, I don't know, but are, are both separate surveys being lumped together in one pool of data? So that that information's not, the fact that some of you folks are submitting multiple for your same houses not canceling each other out?
There, there'll be two separate pools out there, Jillian, there'll be the statistically sampled pool, which will have results, and then all other.
Yeah, so they'll validate, they, they'll validate addresses, unfortunately for them. Opening up the survey makes that a lot more work, opening up online right now makes it a lot more work, but.
So, so from a communication standpoint, because we're in the communications committee, what are we communicating to people that have this question, and we letting them know. That the first survey that comes in will be part of the statistical analysis, and then the second.
Pretty, pretty much what Charlie said, exactly, I've been trying to tell them, this is how statistics work, you look for a valid amount of, the six hundred out of four thousand becomes valid.
No, I, I understand, that was my question.
And others come later, for opinions, but the, the basic, the six hundred's going to count.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, that, that wasn't my question, no, my question was the second survey that comes in, so we let people know that's gonna be in a pool, where is that gonna be, is that gonna be just kept with the.
If the. The. Does a separate report out, they give us the statistically valid report, and then they'll give us the second data set separately.
Right.
Does that come after another, like, set number or date?
Date.
And hopefully the second one doesn't invalidate the first.
Sure, uh, it hasn't so far, it, it, this is, this is the given tape you get, right, we had, we, we, as a town, when we did the community survey, we didn't want to have residents. Um, not have the opportunity to also express their voice if they weren't chosen for that statistically valid sample. um, not have the opportunity to also express their voice if they weren't chosen for that statistically valid sample. And so we arranged with the consultant to do both ways. And so obviously, that comes with an extra level of educating our, our residents, but, you know, we still see value, and so far, we have not had a, a stark contrast between the two data sets. But again, for, for our purposes, that statistically valid data set is the one that we should, you know, that's, there's a reason we paid for it to be validated.
So what I'm hearing is everybody's voice is going to be heard, and they're not gonna cancel each other out, is what you're telling us, or they haven't so far.
If two people from the same address submit a survey, my understanding is the first one counts towards the statistically valid, and the second will go into that other data set.
Nothing should get canceled out for a household. That's what we need to know.
Do we know how many have been?
I don't, Sue, and I was gonna email the consultant today and see if I could get an updated number, so if I get a response, I'll send the response out to the full SBAC.
You don't have to say about stats, right? You've been doing fifty percent of the time, it works every time.
One, one last question on that. I'm, I'm assuming that we are waiting for results before this group makes any kind of final recommendations, right? I mean, that, that seems sound to me, but.
That's on my pay grade, okay.
What was the question?
Defer to the chair.
I'm assuming that we are waiting for the results of the statistically valid sample before we propose our final recommendations.
But we are scheduled to get the results to this, in front of this group on the twenty ninth.
Okay.
So April, April's gonna go door to door and then people.
Wait, and we?
That's what's, that's what our time, that's what, I think two weeks ago, we looked at it, we thought that we'd have it within three weeks.
For the statistical sample, not for that other pool. Yeah, the other pool, we would still be waiting.
Go ahead, Julian, what?
I thought April just said we were gonna get both.
Well, we can get, it's possible to get the statistically valid data first, if we leave the window of time open for people to continue to take the survey, then it could come in two separate batches.
Okay.
So there's a give and get there too, where if we wanna leave the survey open for longer, but we wanna hold on to both data sets and present them both at the same time, then we're delaying that statistically valid data from coming out, the longer we keep the survey open. But we also wanna keep the survey long enough for people to.
In order for us to have it, in time for us to move into the options, brainstorming, workshopping, we, I, I, my recommendation, April, is that we, we get what we can get in, in the next two weeks.
I will.
If it's only a statistically relevant sample, then that, at least we have something to work with to go forward on.
Oh, I can follow up with, with the consultant, no problem.
Thank you.
What's the population scale? Twenty-two thousand? How many, how many people do you think?
Oh, I know.
All right, so, thanks, everyone. I know it's eight o'clock, so thank you. A motion to adjourn?
So we'll.
Second, although, although it's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Except that, you know, like if.
Do you always have, have some subjects ready?
That's renovation.
Oh, thank you, thank you. That's. That, like, that was. No, I know, I really wish. So.
Yes, yes.
Oh, my brain, mine, I'm, I'm trying to.
But.
Very, very.
We're.
This is. So at least we do.
Yeah, because people are gonna ask so many questions.
That's okay.
I heard different.
Night off.
Just something that that's a.
The, the sound is on.
Yeah, yeah, that is.
But most people.
Wait, you're asking us to go after the back? Yes, I'm ready, I'm leaving.
Um, the interest of, is there any issue other than the agenda tonight to talk about?
Uh, I do have, uh, questions, the two of us. That can mean, like, the option workshop?
No, isn't that the enrollment? First, oh, sorry, the servant, the first week in May, I believe, is the, uh.
Yeah, I had worked around, I knew the agenda was posted somewhere.
We had talked about the, um, the survey, survey one.
Well, that's what was lost about having a harem.
I mean, they're all open to the public, it's just a matter of average, like, really getting some, like, promotional stuff, yeah.
What do you think?
Good idea, Ben.
All right.
That looks like a priceless day. Good idea, from where I, my perspective is, I think this is, the validating of the, the information that's available.
Thank you, Julian. Oh, yeah. I'm gonna, um. Yeah, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna send the documents to those guys tonight.
Their ideas out there, and one thing I really would like to do is, and I know you guys are going to take support, is that, what about this, what about that?
Wherever. You know, I'll have a voice pre-attack. Channing. Right.
And the reality, the more people have all, have all of these big idea conversations, I just think that that's.
I don't, I don't.
In terms of members of the public watching.
I think in order to make everyone, because I think there are a lot of really great ideas out there that just haven't necessarily been considered, and those ideas may flow together, and they attach well together, and, you know, I think the more public we can have present, the better, personally, um.
So, Julian, what can this school department do to help those guys? I can understand not giving them access to post themselves, but to get the stuff they're doing onto the school department. The communications committee? That's, what's that? That's a working process. Oh, okay. Cause I can, I would, no, I mean, give them access, that would not work out. No, I mean. There was a, a long process of how, how to, I, I can, I can side this conversation with you after, so we don't derail this, but it's been, there have been a chain of emails trying to resolve. Trying to get it done, so to speak. Yeah, and, and the right way, and with the right people, you know.
So next, next week, the schedule is the presentations, so there's three groups, right? I know finance, as you've heard, we don't.
Next week is presentation?
The, the twenty second.
Well.
Infrastructure.
Well, hey, we're ready to go. We're, we're ready to go.
Let's do it.
Well, part of it.
Our report's one sentence, right?
So, so, I, we can, I can make a modification either, so I did, I, cause I actually thought it was two weeks, and I told them we had two weeks, so next week was, they were gonna bring a rough draft. So, but, but the plan did have, uh, April twenty second as presentation of subcommittees, and then April twenty ninth, presentation of public survey data. And then, following that, on the twenty ninth, was when we start workshopping.
I thought it was workshop on the twenty ninth.
Cause what we're gonna do an hour an hour.
Building options workshop twenty ninth, um, and then I had two sessions of that, so basically, the first two weeks of May were workshopping, brainstorming IP sessions. And then, on the thirteenth, we create subcommittees to kind of narrow it up front. We, we decide on two or three that we think, you know, ideas that might hold water, and then create some committees to really kind of study those, and find all the, all holes in them, or, or like, why is this, like, champion them, or whatever.
A, a theme for the workshop, like, should it be one of those, I forget what they're called, where, um, people like get together for a weekend, but they may, they start.
Retreat?
Sort of, but they can start by giving pitches, and then everybody gives the pitch for their different idea, and then people kind of give up their idea, join somebody else's idea, and they form like little groups.
College.
No, I feel, there's like a name for it, I forget what it's called.
I, I know what you're talking about, uh, I've never facilitated that, but it would work.
We could have, we could ask Amy and James if they would want to.
I wasn't at the council corner, like, how did they facilitate?
Who are damaging?
They're outside consultants who sometimes help the town with, um, bringing people together, like, they're, they're facilit, they're discussion facilitators.
Oh.
And they have helped us in the past on a few different things. They helped run a counselor corner live, where we kind of just had people come and do this workshopping idea. Um, just because there was a lot of energy at the time, and I wanted to kind of capitalize on it, but I, then I wasn't able to go, so did you guys break into small subgroups? Did people kind of pitch, and then people move to that group? Like, how?
No, they didn't do it like that. It was more like, um, you know, where, like, one of the main topics was like, where were you on the scale of? That's right. So, um, which was, which was really interesting, I mean, I, I, I'm sure that they could come up with, if, if they were willing, I'm sure that they would be able to come up with a good way of doing, kind of like what James just said, like, here's some ideas.
They have, they have offered to help.
Yeah.
But it's unclear to me whether it's with a fee or without a fee, so.
Uh, we, we can explore that, I mean, if they, yeah, I mean, I don't know what they charge, but.
I don't either.
You know.
The reason is, is you might wanna say to everybody, you know, come, if you have an idea, like, put whatever document you want, and like, come with like a five minute pitch or three minutes.
Yeah.
It, it might be good to, even like, we're presenting all the data like before, like, enrollment study was out beforehand, like, if we could have, like, even just a flavor of a few of the ideas that are gonna get floated to send out with the agenda that people can start thinking about them.
Well, if we made a big splash about it, like, your ideas, so that people can look at, like, you know, an actual, like, a one major or something, so that everybody can look over them and know what they're expecting. So that's not a surprise, like, uh, cause I think that's where things get confusing.
Yeah, and I think there's like room for also, like, spur of the moment, or not spur of the moment, but you know what I mean, like, I didn't have time to do my write-up, like, I think we should give some breathing room to that, but if it's avoidable, I don't think everything needs to be spur of the moment.
Yeah, I mean, cause we.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll see if, yeah, it's coming, but I'll take that.
As recently as April first, they reached out.
Yeah.
So, recently about this?
Well, I mean, to help, if, if you're, you know, I guess when there were some struggles, other things, but they've stayed kind of plugged in, so.
Yeah, they, they, they've done a lot of really cool work, and, uh, Peter, April and I were on it, maybe, two, before, oh, that's right.
So, so, so going back to the next Monday.
Yeah, so, so, so can we push presentations to the twenty ninth, and basically, the twenty ninth is all readouts. It's the survey and the subcommittee presentations, and we don't stop, we don't, um, we would, that would force us to push the workshop for, and only have one week of, of workshopping. It's one, two hour session, which might be all we need, really, to help, you know, people already have the ideas in their heads, you know, um, and then from, so that would then push that to the uh, what's that, the eighth?
Can I, I do have the calendar open. Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Are you pushing things because infrastructure's not ready to present?
Is, is every other subcommittee ready? I mean, we just gave them slides today. I don't know that anybody's ready.
We have seen the infrastructure.
I, I think, I think infrastructure, finance, rents, place, I mean, are charged to records to verify, so we can do one of them.
Programming is ready. I think we could push infrastructure to be ready. I think we just, we, we would have to meet probably Thursday or Friday.
Yeah.
I got half of them still standing here, so.
Yeah, the likes are on, but, no, I, look, that group is so full of energy and ideas, that the conversations, it's really, and, and I wasn't even in most of the discussion today, cause I was off back, but they really struggle to get on, to stay on track, because there's just a ton of great, of energy there, and, and so.
And our questions, the questions for the infrastructure subcommittee are a mix of verifying what is available through site tours and building evaluations and the harriman report, and then there's this other kind of finance budget related questions, like putting numbers to renovation costs, and we just, we get our wheels.
Yeah, and then, in, in finance, has the same issue, that we don't understand the assumptions that would enter the harem suit to drive those numbers, without a lot of detail, it's hard to then say the numbers are valid, it's.
So I, I pushed infrastructure pretty hard today to present what was verifiable, or what is our observations based on the work that we've done, and to kind of just acknowledge that there's a subset of questions that we can't answer.
Yeah.
That's, I don't know what, how we would answer them.
I think the other half of it is like, will one week really help? Like, it, Herrmann might get back and be like, oh, here are all the answers to your questions, or it's just gonna be like another week of like, we still, we still don't have the information we need to do.
Do it.
Okay, so it seems like the consensus is we still stay to the twenty second report out, and then we implement a qualified report out.
Yeah, some things may have to just be turked to phase two, I, I mean.
Yeah.
I, I, and that's the thing, is, you know, Nick and Jan and you and I develop, helped develop those questions, and those were really, I mean, from my perspective, those were really just to kind of give the group some focus, and they weren't like, you, you must answer all of these questions. It was more just to like, I, frame channel people's energy, and so.
All right, so the next question, there, there's gonna be three groups. How long do you think each group will need to present?
Take an hour to do it.
I, that's very clear.
Well, but I, but I think enrollment was one of the more controversial, yeah, ones, right?
Still.
I don't, but she presented for thirty minutes before we got to questions, right? Um, but, but part of that is because she took, she, she told me last night, she took some of the questions that she got, and she addressed the questions, and so then, that's, that made the Q and A section shorter.
Yep.
Um.
Thirty minutes, I think.
I think you're thirty minutes per that, that's ninety minutes of the, of the day, right?
If you shoot for like thirty each, you've gotta flex thirty, that, oh, wow, this is not done, we've got like a little bit of wiggle room, then like booking into two hour slot, and then we're eight-thirty, and everyone's frustrated, because they wanna go home.
Yeah.
I think for benchmarking, you'd see probably at least a half hour.
Yeah, I don't think we're too controversial of a topic.
Did you say at least a half hour? You'd need more, it's like.
Oh, wait, you think, I, I was gonna say thirty is a good comfortable spot for us.
Yeah, I think we need at least a half hour. Fifteen minutes to present, and then.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I did.
Fifteen, fifteen. Yeah, just try and break it fifteen for presentation, fifteen for question.
So that, that pretty much is the.
Yeah.
Public comment, adjournment. Oh, I meant on that, did I not even do adjournments? I'm sorry.
Yes, the, I think the only things that, that we said we'd talk about tonight from Steve's were Steve Hamley's email questions. Do you wanna brainstorm that stuff now?
Well, I just think, you know, I think Steve raises a question about just being, having access to some of the stuff, I mean, or the presentations, I have thought, it was really good to get the enrollment presentation ahead of time, so then you could kind of, I mean, I at least, I couldn't see the screens, like, at least, but I think our timetable for our, for us, it's gonna be kind of tough.
There's no way. Not, not like, I, we go back to infrastructure and tell them this final draft is due next Monday, we'll be lucky to get the final half done by Monday.
They'll be finishing at three o'clock, I'm like that.
But I, but I still think that Steve's question, I think we should, you know, whatever documents we have, we're trying to post to, can Nate get, can Steve get to those?
Yeah, that was my question, does he have access to the Google Drive?
No.
He does.
He asked for it.
Someone has to forward.
He's not on the committee?
Nope, he's not. He's, he asked for it, we told him no, um, and so now he's asking for all the documents that are on the drive.
Yeah, I was gonna say, all those docs for benchmarking are on the drive.
My heart's too. Everything, we've been taking really good notes.
So why couldn't he have, aren't they public? Yeah, he can have, uh, so, we, someone has sent it to him.
Uh, the school didn't want to, or we could, but Dan didn't wanna open up the access to.
It, no, we can still, we can still, like, you can download as a PDF or something and send anything to anybody, like, any one of us.
He can have the contents of the folders, it's just a matter of.
He can't, he can't get access to the folders, and the truth is that that would be, one, one, it would be crazy, but we can, we could ask people, if you're, you know, whatever documents you're talking about in your subcommittees, you're reporting about, you know, please send us a link to those, and we will just put them in the agenda. Um, that is a solution. Um, that is a solution, um.
It's a slippery slope, right, like, I, I have no problem sharing whatever we want to share, I don't think there's anything in here that's that's secret, right, none of the working documents, but. And and Steve is probably the only one who's gonna ask.
Right.
So Susan, so I don't mind Susan, Susan's in the committee, she can get it, she can.
Yeah.
Susan's.
Right, so like, I don't mind it, but it is a slippery, like, if anybody from the community just starts emailing and saying, hey, I want that spreadsheet, I want a copy of that, give me a copy of that, and where'd you get that number, and and before you know it, your whole week is sending documents to people, yeah, so that.
Now, why did you skip this one?
Right, and then all the, right, so like.
Or this number.
And again, it's not about lack of transparency, it's about timely manage, if if it were to, if.
True.
Probably highly unlikely that the community suddenly gets a spark and starts asking for data, I'm just, my my point is only to say that it is a slippery slope that we get, for the same reason that, you know, we weren't gonna make, the school wasn't gonna make an exception and grant Steve access to the folders, was because.
And that is definitely a slippery slope.
It's a slippery slope, right, so are we, are we prepared if more than Steve starts asking for stuff, are we prepared to to give every member of the community the same level of attention that we give to Steve?
Well, can we, can we send them to some other site that they can get?
But then.
That's, that's what I mean about the agenda, if we're referencing a document, I mean, like, if the town council does this, they, that's why their packets are four hundred pages, but, um, you know, if we're. If we're referencing, sorry, I closed my eyes literally that the thought of the packet for Wednesday, and these guys all chuckled, so.
I saw the fatigue.
Yes, literally, I mean, but.
They are, yeah, we include everything.
Every, like, you know, when the DEI committee meets, if they reference a document that they're working on internally in the school, too bad, it has to go in the, in the agenda, that's public document now, um, they they work it by just popping a link into the agenda.
But Peter has a good point, like, is there just, I don't know that this exists, but is there a place that we can just like basically mirror what the Google Drive and just like.
Documents are.
I mean, somebody would have to manually go in and add, so if you're.
Get them all PDFs and upload them.
Right, if you're working on the documents.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Right, I mean, it would be.
And.
A lift, to say the least, I I.
Can you just say no, bring your questions to the S P A committee?
No, or say we'll be part of the agenda packet, or before the meeting.
Well, a part of the problem is, I think, what Steve sometimes is asking for, things that mean, I mean, the agenda's a. Fin.
Oh, I agree.
If this is a lot more detailed.
Right, and I understand that Steve is very engaged, but at the same range, we can't do something for one person, there's twenty five thousand people in Scarborough. All of whom are entitled to that, yeah, think about that, I mean, one, if they all say, we're gonna, we're gonna all make choices, you'd have to hire full-time staff, so.
We, we would never want it to get.
I think you have to find a way to make it public.
Not disagreeing that we'll make it public, but I don't think.
You're gonna have the distrust, if this report all comes out, it's done, and people didn't get what they wanted to participate, they're not, it's a trust issue, it's gonna go way up, distrust.
I mean.
What are they hiding on those documents?
There was zero criteria to join the committee, so anybody that doesn't have trust in the process could have, could have been part of the process, I mean, there is that too, right?
Yeah, except for there, it was the the cost of having to be here, every three excuses, which. For some, that's, but can can it, can it go just to the Scarborough School page documents that that we?
Well, somebody has to manage that, yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, if if.
I guess my question though, for, like, for that though, Peter, is some of the documents that I think Steve wants are working documents, like, infrastructure has a spreadsheet, and we've just been putting each school building, and then we've been putting the deficiencies in this big one single document. If we were gonna share that, it would have to be made into a PDF and then shared, and it would only be, he'd only be getting that snapshot.
Yeah.
And then when, like, what's the schedule for updating that PDF, wherever that PDF is, like, it just becomes.
And not only that, like, when, when they're working documents, like, I could go put anything I want in that spreadsheet, right, so we've, we've got a bunch, we got a bunch of people here that are doing their own math on cost estimates, and they go, oh, this is how much it actually costs.
Right, and that's not verified.
And that goes to the public, it's not verifiable, it's somebody's back of the napkin map, and the public gets a hold, and goes, well, why was it a hundred and sixty million to build a school? It should have only cost forty million, based on the math that I saw in the, in the advisory committee's work. Right, so there's, there's that, when, so that's why I think originally, you know, we should, anything that's ready for public consumption should be available to the public.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything that's ready, but working documents have to be working documents.
We're, we're. Advisory committee, you know, providing your recommendation, we need, we need space to work, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it possible to do like a final readout, like, we can, like, the presentations for next week, those can go and like.
I think they should.
They should, they should.
Those are public.
Yeah.
I think all of those, and then if there are finalized, verified, supporting documentation, that was kind of what my email was suggestion was, so so like the enrollment study today, that presentation should be available, and then any documents, any data that she referenced in that, to get to where her recommendation was, should all be public.
Right.
So she, now.
Exactly.
Her spreadsheets where she did math, and her formulas and stuff, you know, that maybe doesn't need to be, but it, but the data that got to where she got to should all be public.
So how do you do that? That, I mean, that's the question.
It's already on the school website. So everything that she presented was there.
It's out there now, on there, okay.
So, what I'm hearing is, if if a committee is in the midst of working on a document that's not ready yet for public consumption, um, then we're not necessarily sending those out.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but, but if we have something that is being presented, it should be in with the agenda for sure.
I think it's the same, use the same criteria we're using for town council or the school board, that when it is finalized, it's public information, and until that point, it's a working document, yeah.
I mean, they did put the enrollment. The last agenda, so.
Yeah.
Um, and just try, I mean, be as consistent as we can, and make sure that the agenda packets have all of our supporting documents that are final.
Yeah, and make sure that.
I'm sorry, do we need the agenda or the um, minutes?
When, so. For the enrollment stuff that went today, for example, the the PowerPoint presentation was a, was a link on the calendar.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah.
And it wasn't, it wasn't agenda without, so the whole.
Here's.
And that makes it easy for people, I used some of those today, when I looked at the newsletter, the town newsletter, I said, oh.
We should, we should do it, we should, a hundred percent, we should do it, this week, you're gonna be, you're gonna have to challenge, because I don't think people are gonna be, have their presentations ready for next Monday.
And we're just gonna have to update the links on the calendar as as we can.
Yeah, we can, we can say these will be on the website within twenty four hours.
So then, so here here's what we need to do then, when we send out, we need to get a communication to the committee clarifying, because I I know at least our committee thinks we have two weeks to get their presentations ready.
Um, okay.
They have one week, so we need to get that.
And that will be your, this will be yours.
This, yeah, the building, so we need to get a communication out to the, to the S P A C, clarifying that all presentations are due, with, will, all presentations will be on Monday, the twenty second, and what's the drop dead timeline to have slides? Published. When do we need them? To be ready for.
I think.
Give it to me, I love.
I think, I think Monday, I just, we have to give people the Monday.
Yep, we do, and we put it right in the agenda to please click back, uh, you know, Monday afternoon by four o'clock, and agenda, you know, the presentations will be available. It's not beautiful, but it's a compromise for this one, one little look.
I would be, I would lean towards public on Tuesday if it's like acceptable for everyone, because, I mean, we're already having a big ask of like a team who thinks that it's two weeks out, and like, they may say like, oh my goodness, can we crash it at like, everyone's out of work at five PM, work till six, and like, oh my. So like, I think we already are asking kind of a big thing.
We're getting back in our college days, cradling for that group presentation.
Yeah, yeah. You'll be going through our presentations, all working.
My son is up till eleven, all time for a group presentation.
And like, I, I wouldn't be weary of like having like a pre-free, um, like, someone's like, oh my goodness, we had to throw this last thing in, which one's the final one, all those, like.
Let's.
Yeah, I think it's setting up for success would be doing it Tuesday.
Publish this presentation.
Yeah. I'll take, I'll I'll take the hit on this, Peter, it's my, I.
I.
I thought we had two weeks, I don't know why, and it's right in my project plan that it's next week, so.
Charlie, you can't make mistakes.
I blew it.
You can't be human.
They'll, they'll hold, they, that group, that group will, they'll be alright.
They'll rise to the.
They will.
Okay, anything else?
Um, I will not be there.
Okay.
I apologize.
So.
Me either.
I'm happy to help get all of this stuff to Steve, I I I literally opened up my mail to, I I should even get.
I can, I can get the stuff, I'll just let you.
Good luck with the party.
So if you saw anything as well.
I'm so excited.
My husband started balloon blowups.
Did he?
Yeah.
My daughter picked up.
Yeah, I gotta look it up, and you know, oh my god.
And, you know, tell me, you're getting sent X, Y, Z.
I I wanna, I did apologize, Steve, I'm sorry, guy.
But I can't.
We've bothered Gary, so I, we will.
Steve, Steve is, you want an insight?
No, I I I.
Think about it.
I love that.